Hey, what's up everyone? This is Mayor Eddie Melton, right here in the city of Gary, in the 5th district, on the grounds of Roosevelt High School. Historic monument to the great city of Gary, Indiana. Although, when the Horseman High School, you have to love the history, not just in the city of Gary, but throughout the country. I want you guys to see the amount of work and attention that we're putting into this facility. We're here today at Roosevelt, and this is one of what, I think, six or seven, right? Mayor of projects that are called the Jewel Parks, around the entire city that we're working on, and fixing parking lots, and tennis courts, and basketball courts, and baseball fields. So it's citywide, and this is the first one. We wanted to get this done very quickly for Mayor and his team, because there's a big celebration here, obviously, coming up. But again, we absolutely thrive on being part of this city. There's nothing that, me personally, I love more in my life, other than my family, is this city, and the opportunity to be able to be here and give back to the place that I love so much. And he's from Edna. That's right. Gotta be known. Edna, 13th and Edna Street. Got an Edna boy right here. Investing in the parking lots, in the tennis courts, in the basketball courts, beautifying this entire area, right here in the midtown area in the city of Gary. This is just the start, folks. Today, we're not just breaking ground on a building, we're breaking ground in hope, opportunity, and truly transformation. The Talleson Opportunity Campus will be more than a facility. It will be a space for our youth, a wellness hub for our families, and a support system for tomorrow.
So this will be the brand-new lobby reception area, new coffee shop in this corner over here. That area underneath there is all the new Methodist health space.
Right here, we'll have another main stairway coming up, so that you can go up to here, where we're gonna have, like, the workout area, that'll then lead into a track, that'll go all around the gym, overlooking the gym downward.
Hey, what's up, everyone? This is Mayor Eddie Melton, right here in the great city of Gary, Indiana, and I am truly excited to be on the site of the new YMCA that is built right here on the Talleson Campus in the city of Gary.
Right now, we're coming through detailing all the steel, finishing up all of our welded connections. After you jump the next foundation line, looking at the three basketball courts are gonna be right through here.
What do you join in the, in the fun?
I'm not gonna play basketball. So today, we're gonna tour the site. It's an honor and a pleasure to just talk with the leaders that's on this project, with Powers and Sons Construction, Burgland Construction, and the entire team.
I am Mayman Powers with Powers and Sons Construction. We're excited to be here at the new YMCA of Talleson and Gary, Indiana. I grew up just blocks away from here, so it's just amazing to see, and so proud of the investment that the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, and Methodist Hospitals are putting into our community. This is gonna be great for the city of Gary, and great for the local neighborhood.
I am Alex Morowski, project manager for Burgland Construction, lead project manager on the Talleson Operation, or Talleson Opportunity Campus. Really excited to have Mayor Melton out here with us today, really getting able to look at this new expansion and all the new scope that we've got out here, from the new basketball hoops, to the new pools getting dug, the new steel structure that's coming out, out here, and we are all really excited. The biggest thing that we're excited about, and why we love construction so much, is being able to finish things up and see the final product that's out here. So that's really what we're looking forward to, is working through scope, and in the end here, being able to see how this impacts the community for years to come, getting the kids involved out here, and really becoming a part of the community, has been a great opportunity for us.
So we wanna thank the Boys and Girls Club, Methodist Hospitals, all of the non-private organizations that's been responsible for bringing this project together, so stay tuned.
Hi, my name is Veronica Collins Ellis. I'm the executive director of the Gary Health Department, and we are having our Health Fair, Health and Resource Fair, here at IUN in the Savannah parking lot. The services that we're providing are STI testing, vaccines, cholesterol, hemoglobin testing. We are providing free dental services. We have a plethora of other resources that you can come and check us out at. We will try to do this every year, to provide these services, but you can contact the Gary Health Department at 219-882-5565 for additional services.
It'll be a party in Gary this afternoon. A new Jackson 5 mural is being unveiled in the Miller Beach neighborhood. The local artist behind the new mural is Felix Maldonado. The city says it is meant to reflect cultural preservation and tourism development.
Today, this represents a truly special moment in Gary's ongoing cultural renaissance.
We come from a city of greatness.
Flex, great job, man. Again, your, your signature, your brand, your style is known across the world, and right here in Gary, right here in Miller, this neighborhood, is gonna resonate for generations to come, Lord willing. So just let's give it up again, one more time.
Thank you very much for being here, and someone pointed out to me that Michael Jackson had a shirt just like me.
The business owners are very proud to have this new Jackson family mural, beautifully recreated by Felix Maldonado.
Much more I can really add from what these fine people behind me said already, other than I am very proud to be back in Miller Beach. Thank you so much, and enjoy the mural.
In the world we live in today, we need more of this.
We wanna share today, we're doing more murals. If you go on 25th and Broadway, 25th and Broadway, in the intersection, you're gonna see a beautiful mural being done right now of Gary's own Denise Williams. In the spirit of the Jackson family, the Jackson 5 mural reflects what's possible when talent, community, creativity come together. It reminds us that Gary has always and will be the birthplace of greatness, creativity, and resilience.
Thank you, City of Gary.
Thank you, City of Gary.
I just really wanna thank the community for coming together to make the second annual Back to School Fest a success. To me, this event, what it represents is community.
This was such a blessing today. My heart is filled with such gratitude. For me, I think, the first thing first is, have a vision for where you wanna go, you know? I don't care what grade you're in, you know? If your goal is to get better grades and start preparing yourself and doing those things, a lot of times, you know, you think about it, if you get in the car and you turn your GPS on, your GPS is only as good as the directions or the destination you put in there. So have a destination, have some goals set to go, and then get out and conquer those goals. We give away so many resources to so many deserving families, so I'm ecstatic, and I can't thank our volunteers enough, I can't thank our sponsors enough, I can't thank the Railcast, just everyone who, all the vendors and everyone who has donated to make this event as successful as it was. It wasn't a one-woman show, it's not a one-committee show. This is what it means when a community comes out and comes together and blesses our scholars and their families.
We are GPD.
We are GPD.
We are GPD.
We're the ones who show up when it counts, the ones who run toward the problem, not away. If you've got the heart, if you're ready to step up for your city, this is your moment. We're hiring, right here, for Gary. K-9 Unit, SWAT, Federal Task Force, ATV Patrol, whatever your lane is. This isn't just a job, it's your opportunity to lead, to protect, to serve.
The time is now. Mission, vision, and values of greater Gary.
So the only question is, are you? Apply now, gary.gov/polic, or email gpder recruiting at gary.gov. We are GPD. It's your city, your future, your call.
You guys are being part of history right now. So you know, you ever been to Fort Wayne?
Yeah.
Baseball field?
Yep.
South Bend and their baseball field, that's, I'm trying to create that type of atmosphere. What's up, everybody? This is Mayor Eddie Melton, right here at 700 East 5th Avenue, right here in the city of Gary. As you see, the next structure that we're tearing down, which was once owned by the Gary Redevelopment Department, which was an old storage facility, is being torn down right now. It was inoperable, and become blighted, graffiti, poor roofing conditions. So right now, this structure will be a clean site, thanks to our team at Aegis, thanks to, I believe, Sealy Construction.
Yeah.
As well, for the support. What you're gonna see here, as you drive down 5th Avenue, is a clear line of sight, as we're going closer towards the Railcast Stadium. We're gonna be working with the other businesses to make sure that this is a more presentable, safer, cleaner atmosphere for future development in the city of Gary. So, again, thank you, everybody, for your support. It's raining, we're still getting the work in. We wanna thank everybody for their hard work and dedication on the city of Gary. We're gonna be building a brand-new train station in a couple of years.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Gary Plan Commission Meeting for November 20th, 2025. We're gonna open this meeting up and start with the information session on PCU DO, the Introduction to the Unified Development Ordinance. I'm gonna turn it over to staff.
You gotta do roll call first.
Yeah, let's open it. Yeah, we'll do a call first.
Okay.
Roll call. Okay. Tom, Sarah?
Here.
Jeremiah King?
Adam Hall?
Here.
Bill Cook? Willie Miller? Ellen Harrell?
Present.
Darren Washington?
Present.
Sherman Wilson? William Allen. So we have four members present, we can open the meeting, but we can't conduct official business until we have the fifth member present.
Okay, thank you. So, back to the information session on PCU DO.
Okay, so, good afternoon, everybody. We wanted to take this opportunity, we, to just follow up on our presentation from last month. Last month, we went through a detailed description of what each of the new chapters are, and the general summaries of the new zoning districts that we're creating. Since that time, we have been working through continuing to strengthen the ordinance with graphics and just updated language from comments that we've received. For the public that's here, if anybody, you know, we're welcome to take public comment on the draft that is posted on our website, it's gary.gov/planing. Our plan is to have a official public hearing on, on our December Planning Commission Agenda. So that is where we will have a 10-day public notice, and then the official public hearing at the Plan Commission Meeting in December. And Sylvia, do you happen to know the date of the December meeting?
December 18.
Thank you. So I wanted to just share with you some things that we've been doing over the last 30 days to formalize and tweak the ordinance and the language that's in it. Sylvia has been working on mapping, because our entire city needs to be rezoned, because we have these new criteria for these zoning districts, and we have some new zoning districts. And so, we're basically recreating a new map for the city. As we are working through that, we are discovering some unique circumstances where, like, for instance, legal descriptions, when a parcel is sold, the legal description may not be correct, and so they sell it with that legal description, but then it leaves 58 square feet adjacent to the next parcel. So it basically creates a parcel that ends up being a line of land, just simply because the legal description did not correlate with the reporter's office. So there, there's some cleanup that is gonna need to happen, and that will take years, and we don't even know how we will approach that, as a city municipality. You know, maybe we inform individuals. I'll give you another example. There's a block in the city, and we have a partner that is considering doing the exact same thing, where there, there's eight parcels in a block, but they wanna put larger parcels on the property, so they're gonna take those eight parcels and only make six, and they're gonna reduce that by making each one a little bit wider. Now, the county, instead of recreating new, a new one singular parcel, they ended up creating new parcel lines, but maintained the old one. So we have one house that actually sits on two lots, but it is a single-family parcel, and the intent always was that it should have been combined into one parcel. So there's some instances where it's not a duplex, it's a single-family home, it should not have a parcel line, and that impacts tax revenue, because the one parcel is designated by the county by, as vacant, vacant parcel, but really, it's a part of a residential property that is a very nice home. So there's some cleanup that we've gotta work through, and that we've only discovered that because we're going through and remapping the whole city as a result of each of these districts. So each of the districts has a, boy, these apples, I don't even know how to, oh, how do these work? Ronald, how do I move down on a page?
While she figures that out, I also think that there's a two-tier portion for the error. I think it's more so X and Y coordinates, which goes hand-in-hand with the addressing. So a lot of that is compiled into one, and why, if you don't have the exact coordinates for that location, you leave out just a small number, then you end up with that little sliver of space that belongs to someone. Look at that corum.
Thank you for coming.
Do you have to update the basis here for the coordinates also?
That's the way, that's how they're gonna have to fix it.
Yeah.
That is gonna be the ultimate, and then redo the legal. They can't redo legal until they fix the X and Y coordinates, because legal will go from that, they'll split it based upon, you know, X and Y coordinates, as well as acreages, which they'll just shift square footage into acres.
So another glitch that we discovered with our proposed language and the mapping, is because we have these instances where we have these random lines of lots, or maybe the lot is 1,000 square feet, and it should have been a part of another parcel, our code, as it's proposed, R1, you'll see here, underneath the minimum lot width, it's 25 feet, or as platted at the adoption of this ordinance. Well, or platted means that it could be a five-foot lot, and that we don't want a tiny house. We don't want a, someone to go through a BZI variance process in order to put a tiny house on a tiny lot. And so, we're gonna amend this R1 language to be something that it has a smaller lot size, maybe 20 feet lot width, and we're gonna put a minimum square footage on the size of the, of the parcel. So 20 by 100, which is 2,000 square feet, is a minimum lot size for R1, and that will help us steer away from these instances. Another glitch that Sylvia discovered is in the R3 district, this is, this, this district here, where it's our duplexes, or townhomes, you have three attached in the right home. Well, again, the same situation is, we established a minimum lot width, and we'll have a minimum, you know, square footage in the new language, but we also have setbacks. Well, in duplexes, we need our side, side yard setbacks to be, one of them needs to be zero, because in the end, a duplex could be parceled out to condominiums, and you actually have two different parcel owners, even though it is a
One lot.
One lot. And we discovered this in the mapping process, because the, the map shows one single-family unit, right? And that would be an R1, it's one single-family unit. But the building itself is two, and they've divided it, you know, into two parcel ownerships. And the way we can manage that scenario, and encourage two-to-three home developments, is by managing, changing our setbacks, our side yard setbacks in this scenario, to say, it's a 25-foot setback, and one of your side yards needs to be directly, you needed to have a shared wall, basically, with the adjacent parcel, a zero-foot setback.
Makes sense.
That's different than zero lot line.
Well, see, it's different, so, you got two houses, basically, it's not a setback, but it is a setback, 'cause they're conjoined, right?
Yeah.
So that setback will be, exists within the centerpiece of both structures, because they're separated by two different parcel numbers, right? So all structures are identified by parcel number, but this is one whole structure, right? As you see it on ground. Now, if we put it in there the way that Ms. Sharp stated, it has to have that wall in order for it to be considered. That will be the setback, that setback is the requirement, that wall.
So that wall has to actually be on the center line?
In order for it to be considered, R3.
And what this will do, by, by getting to this level of the detail now, it will really limit the BZI's work in the future, and it will encourage these missing middle types of housing that we're trying to get to. We're not just building, you know, these large houses and apartments, we're building a diverse housing product. So by taffling the code and doing the map at the same time, we're really getting into the weeds on some of these, some of these instances. And then, we're, part of the code also is our permitted use table, and our permitted use table, you know, stretches from, everything from accessory dwelling unit to a wind turbine. And we have consolidated the permitted use table from what the existing code says today, that, the existing code served as our foundation, but it had a lot of antiquated permitted uses that are no longer relevant. In the draft that is online and has been circulated too, there are some missing units that, or missing uses, like, for instance, crematorium. Crematorium is not listed on here, so we'll be adding that in, and showing where, where that type of facility can be located in, in the community. So those are some of the
And what was the new one? We got ROSs, RSOs, and my family letters, right? Basically, shared living units, they, it's like dormitories, but apartment-type development, which is going to be very unique around IUN, right? Because that is a type of development to help bring in the, to give the college students the ability to live and attend school. So in that area, that would be unique, and so that was something that actually happened today. Someone, well, no, it was yesterday, we had a meeting, and they spoke about those type of developments, and I thought that was unique, especially for our institutional areas.
We used to have those in downtown Los Angeles, there was a special thing, a single something, I can't remember the exact name.
So, shared living quarters.
It's good for relieving the homeless population as well.
That's true. But it'll have to be by special use, no matter what, where, what place, 'cause it has to be regulated, or else you'll just have a issue.
So, really, this is a presentation just to share with you that we are still working on the code, we're continuing to adapt it based on public feedback and our internal discussions as a team. I have shared a link to the draft of the code to the cabinet members in the administration, and, again, it's online at gary.gov/planing, underneath the Projects tab.
All comments are welcome, good, bad, or otherwise.
And if you have any questions for us today, we're happy to take them.
Any questions from the fellow commissioners? One more time, this is an open public comment period. Anybody would like to speak regarding this PCU DO? Okay, then we'll call this public comment period closed, and thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Okay, counsel, we do have two commissioners that would like to do another roll call, or you wanna just include them?
Oh, we can, so Jeremiah King, present? Sherman Wilson?
Present.
Okay, so with that, now we have six members present, and we do have a quorum to conduct official business.
Thank you. All right, so the first is the approval of the agenda and the minutes, with a note that the PCU DO did go first instead of last on the agenda, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes and the modified agenda?
I move to second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, good. All right, well, we'll All right, we'll move on to uh, uh, Tiff District Resolutions and Amendments, Midwest Center.
Sorry, PC calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry. PC calendar, uh, official dates for the 2026 calendar year?
So these are the um dates, the reason why um our department felt it was necessary to get it out because we have business to handle in December, which means January dates um needs to be um approved because they'll be doing that in December for January, right? So we've looked at it um and kind of viewed through. I hope you guys had an opportunity to look at it in your packet. So um, we wanted to approve it now and get the minutes up online. I mean, the agenda online.
I will note that we did receive a calendar invite for all these dates for 2026, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, so is there a motion to uh any, first of all, any discussion? Uh, any objections to the calendar dates, any conflicts? Okay, uh, then I would uh, like I'd say, entertain a motion to approve the uh Plan Commission calendar for calendar year 26.
Motion to approve is stated.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Now you will have to call for a vote for this.
Yes.
Sherman Wilson?
Yes.
Darren Washington?
Yes.
Alan Harrell?
Yes.
Adam Hall?
Yes.
Jeremiah King?
Yes.
Tom Sarah?
Yes.
So by vote of six to zero, the calendar dates for 2026 have been approved.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Tiff District Resolutions and Amendments. The uh, first one is Midwest Center Tiff Resolution dated December seventeenth, two thousand two.
I'm gonna basically present all three of your resolutions all together. We um, in the city, have multiple Tiff jurisdictions. And uh, yeah, go ahead and pull it, pull your chair up.
I'll remove the chair.
Thank you for joining us, Commissioner. You came right at the right moment. So um, the city of Gary has um Tiff districts. That stands for tax increment financing. It's a mechanism that encourages and spurs redevelopment and economic development of specific geographic areas in the city. We have uh several different Tiff areas. Some of them are, are decades old. Um, and, and Midwest is definitely one of them. We are a step in the process of approving a Tiff district. None of you have ever been a part of that because, as I mentioned, these are decades old. But the way the state statute is written is that a, uh, the redevelopment commission declares that they want to create a Tiff district to spur economic development. They cannot make that decision on their own. They then go to the Plan Commission and say, we'd like to do that. Will you please affirm that um this is a valid use of uh tax increment? What tax increment financing, the Tiff district basically is, it's an opportunity to put a geographic line around a, an area like this projector here. And you say, um, the city is all around here and my five parcels are here. I want to collect the property taxes in this five parcels to invest on these five parcels. So these five parcels collect the future property tax specifically so that they can um encourage development. And what that does is it creates a mortgage-like environment for debt capacity. So you have the, the guaranteed tax income for this property and you can bond against that, you can take a mortgage out, bond against that. And then a, a bank would say, well, we know you have guaranteed income to pay that, so we'll lend you money to invest now into this property. And that's how Tiff works. So they come to the Plan Commission after they've been to the redevelopment commission, they being the developer or the city, either entity can create a Tiff district. Um, at, at that time, the, the Plan Commission reviews it. If the Plan Commission approves the use of the funds, um, the, and the state statute says specifically what the Tiff funds can be used for, you um consider it, after your consideration, it moves on to City Council. And City Council considers it, after City Council considers it. It goes back to the redevelopment commission where um it changes from a declaratory resolution all the way through these three agencies back to a confirmatory resolution, meaning we confirm as a city, all of our agencies, that this is a proper use of tax funding and, and the mission to spur economic development. Okay? So, the three resolutions that are in your packet today deal with three different um districts that were created prior to um twenty twenty-two, definitely, prior to two thousand. But I'm, I'm trying to label the date specifically because the state legislature in twenty-two, twenty-three changed um the law to allow Tiff funding to support public safety, salary, so operating expenses and capital improvements. So um, none of our tax Tiff districts have that listed in how you can spend the money in those specific districts. So what you have here is an amendment to the original declaratory resolution stating that we want to be able to use the Tiff money in these three different districts specifically for a public safety incentive. And uh the dollar amounts are in each of your resolutions. Uh, and it is a one-time payment out of this year's budget for that specific Tiff district. So that's how those resolutions are structured and why it's here before your board. And Attorney Molina, I'll let you close out with any other comments.
Yeah, I think that was a great summary. I just would add, uh, so the, the code site for uh Plan Commission specifically is Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash fourteen dash sixteen. And basically, after the Tiff is approved by the redevelopment commission or by a resolution, it comes to the Plan Commission. And we're basically affirming, yes, that, as she said, that, that is a use that's in line with basically the city plan. Um, because they're now amending these old um resolutions uh to add in the powers granted uh under uh Indiana thirty-six dash seven dash fourteen dash twelve point two, which specifically allows uh funds to be used for police and fire services uh for capital and operating expenses. Um, because they're making that amendment, uh, it's imperative that we approve the amendment uh as the final step. And then it would go to City Council, um, for the City Council's uh decision finally. Uh, so this is kind of the middle step that's required in order to allow these Tiff districts to be, uh, or, or the use of the funds to be amended and go towards police and fire services.
And it require our individual signatures?
Yeah, so we, we, the way we draft it is, each resolution specifically references the uh original uh Tiff district resolutions, their numbers. Uh, and then uh the redevelopment commission, just on November third, uh passed the resolutions that amended the original resolutions. So what we're doing is uh authorizing that amendment. Um, and then we do have a sign uh on this resolution for everybody to sign. We'll take a vote, there's also a, a place that says what the vote is because it may or may not be, you know, all in favor or some against or some abstentions. Um, and then everyone would sign the actual uh petition or, or resolution, regardless of whether you support it or not, just because you're confirming that this vote was taken on this date and that was the action that uh transpired today.
So we'll approve these individually?
Yes.
Following your vote, we will handwrite um any missing commissioners on, in, on the
Already taken care of.
Already taken care of, okay, fantastic. And we will pass around one sheet for everyone to sign.
Thank you.
That just means I'm special.
That's, that is exactly what it is.
Are there any questions or?
Yeah, a couple, um, so to explain this clearly, we wanna, we wanna make sure everybody understands this is not creating a new Tiff. This is taking money from an existing Tiff um to do this. And Corey, this money already exists in these Tiffs. These are not bonds being leveled against the Tiff to do that. And that's gonna be very important because, and I'm just preferencing this to explain it when it comes before the City Council, that they don't think, that we don't think that it's a new Tiff or that we are leveling the look at bonds. Um, it's money that's already existing. Because when you do the bonds, you gotta look at the value of the land, make sure that you can get that money recouped. And honestly, I talked to the mayor about this. I think this is, and, and this is, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hall and Attorney Molina, this is the first time that I've seen um this Tiff money be used for public safety.
Yep.
Um, because this is an excellent opportunity to use Tiff money for that. Because generally, if the Tiff wasn't there, that money is supposed to go to public safety anyway. And because of all the issues that we're having and trying to ensure, and I know some of you already in the newspaper about Maryville and public safety and giving raises. And although we can't do that, I think this was an excellent idea to be able to show all public safety, fire, staff, um, law enforcement, that we are continuously trying to look at innovative ways to ensure that they understand that we respect them by, you know, providing bonuses and, 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 and pay. So, I thought this was a very genius idea of how to use that Tiff money to go towards public safety. And if we're gonna have those many Tiffs, if there's money in there, I can't think of a better way to use that to take care of our public safety until we can afford to close down a lot of the Tiffs. So kudos.
And it is just one time, it's not per year?
Right.
My concern is that we stabilize, not that it's not a good idea to take care of your public safety, but as you have more and more Tiffs, the regular tax base and, and the, the way that system really should work, I want to make sure we're not just moving, moving pieces around without stabilizing entirely of our tax base. Because the more you move things around, you never get to that stabilization. Tiffs, of course, are supposed to add value long-term, which I'm really interested in that portion. So we do, do our portions where a Tiff is beneficial.
You have to resolve them. So until you dissolve them, there's no expiration. I'm sorry, he asked a question, I apologize. You can continue.
Yeah, you asked about stability, I was asking if there's expiration dates on these.
Well, each, each Tiff has an expiration date. And I know we have to really look at those dates when they come up because like some of those Tiffs are like twenty, thirty years. Like, one Tiff that really frustrates me is the airport Tiff. So I'm not gonna get into that here, but I think Corey had it.
And, and that's the stable, the, when I say stabilization, these long-term Tiffs, where we don't have a lot of background, I'm not saying I can't read, but the fact is, there's a lot more detail and a lot of background, it needs to be disclosed to us.
So um, at the redevelopment commission, there are some reporting criteria and some criteria that's established at the state level as to how long these Tiffs can exist. Back in twenty nineteen, I believe they passed a state law that um Tiffs have an expiration of twenty-five years. Um, or thirty, depending on certain criteria. But essentially, it is twenty-five years is whatever is being worked towards today. These three Tiffs expire in twenty twenty-nine. So uh they are close to closeout. Um, and the investment that has happened in these areas has already happened. So these are excess funds in existing Tiff areas that expire in twenty twenty-nine.
Okay, so you're saying they've all done well, they've done what we should see a Tiff do? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
But also, you gotta understand too, with the Tiff, the increment goes into that pot, that pot every year. So, I mean, if it's, if it's a beneficial Tiff, it's gonna continue to develop. And Corey, let me ask, um, let me ask you this. Is, for a Tiff that need, that administration would decide needs to close early, does the redevelopment have commissions, say if it's a twenty-five year, if they want to close it in year twenty twenty-six, doesn't the redevelopment commission have that power to do it?
The redevelopment commission does have that power to do that. There, um, some of our Tiffs have bonds, debt associated with them. And so, paying off debt early always is a, a stipulation that we need to consider. You know, is it a benefit or do we have penalties associated with paying off early? I have not gotten into the weeds on wh- where we are in that debt because most of our debt is close to being paid off. Um, and the plan is that when that debt is paid off, for instance, one of these Tiffs, um, clo- the last debt payment is in February of twenty-nine. That's, that is when it will
Oh, so these three still have bonds that's due on it?
There is one.
Just one of these Tiffs? And what is it? The only way you can close a Tiff early is if there is no bond payments that's due on it?
I know that, I'm very familiar with mortgage lending because I was in that industry. So for me, we, you know, it's just like a libor or any type of debt, as we're saying. Very familiar with that. That's why I'm asking for particulars because when you make decisions, you need to measure what you're doing. And as, as a fiduciary for, for this group, I would want to know those things.
Well, this is a land, this is a petition where we, we are adding a way to spend the existing Tiff dollars. We're not creating new Tiff areas, so, okay.
The, from my time on redevelopment, um, uh, I know we, we in the past didn't have a good understanding of how much money was actually in each of the Tiff funds. And I think due to Councilman Washington's efforts, um, that's now been corrected. And I guess somebody said, oh, look, we've got next to me three in this particular fund. And that's the kind of thing that, that needed to be done. The bonds are all taken care of on a regular basis. And some of them have been paid off early. Uh, SEH was working with redevelopment to determine which bonds could be paid off early to save money uh on, you know, on, on retiring them earlier. So those districts that have bonds, let's say, that went through twenty twenty-nine, if, if the bonds have been paid off, then any income at that point is gonna be the supplemental income to the Tiff and not have to go to bond payment because those have all been retired. And I don't know what the current status on each of these is, but not all the Tiff districts have bonds. Um, and some of them were purely bond payments. There was never going to be any additional income, it was just a financing mechanism.
It's great to know we're in the black in some areas, but it's one thing to know it versus hear of it. But the de- the devil's in the, in the details. So I, I'm, I'm happy, but as some wise people say, happy but there.
That's why I said, the, what was it, the finance committee that you created, redevelopment, um, has, has taken care of doing that. Which was a very good thing.
So who would be disclosed to us?
If you would, yeah, if you would like, um, the redevelopment commission, um, just earlier, just two weeks ago, approved their twenty-six budget. And I'm happy to forward that to you all, um, for your, for your information. It will show you each of the different Tiff districts that are in the city. It will show you um the beginning balance, both for twenty-five and twenty-six. It will show you um
Debt service?
Debt service. And it will show you also um debt expiration, uh month, you know, when the debt payments are due, the purpose of each of the Tiff districts, and it will show you a map of that Tiff district. Um, and then it will show you also each of the, um, the revenues that are expected to come in and any other expenses that are going out. So um, it's a pretty detailed, um, I'm happy to share that.
So you would share that, yes, please, it's not online, you would share that with us?
It will be online, um, actually, we filed it with DLGF last week, so
Next one.
Yeah, but I will share it with you all, it would be an email, that way you have it in your inbox.
And none of this, the ones that are in here um would impact the, the planning, the new comp plan um ideas that, you know, we've been putting forward, such as the new convention center. That's in the, I don't know if that's in a Tiff district, it's at least next to the one that the RDOC is in, if it's not in it.
Yeah, it is in a Tiff district, it's not in a Tiff district. It's not in a TIF district that the city of Gary or the Gary redevelopment commission manages. That is in the Gary Airport Authority TIF district. So that, that TIF district, I unfortunately am not able to report to you on. I don't have information to be able to share how that is performing or the, the extent of the purpose for that TIF.
And I sit on the airport board compact and they have to come before the finance committee because we approve a portion of that budget. So I'm, I don't think it'd be a problem because the airport is its own entity. So their TIF is not on Gateway where you practically can see everybody, all the other TIFs. And so Steve Dalton, who is their, their accountant, he can provide that information at request of what that TIF is. And the challenge is that, I don't know if y'all remember, they, a lot of people don't know, and it goes to what you was talking about, Mr. Miller, that they had, when they did the lease buyback years ago, it was a TIF, I think it was like $55 billion. They explained it at the meeting. And that TIF is due to expire, I believe, in 2030. But they recently, earlier this year, did a $16 million bond for two hangars. And that TIF, I was told, is an additional 20 years. And my concern that I told with the administration on that, and I don't know who was, none of us were a part of that, but when that convention center or that casino was placed where it was placed, it was placed right directly in a TIF. So all of the building that is going to progress around that area, that was all that, well, not the taxes and thing, but we're just talking about the increment because the value is going to increase. It's gonna go to the airport, to that TIF where they spend that. And so, I mean, the mayor has the majority of the appointments on the airport board. And also you look at the convention center. I just think, that's why I was asking questions about how long, because actually if that bond wasn't produced in the TIF for those two hangars by 2030, that other bond would have expired. And so they extended it when the airport approved that, that money for that bond. So that increment and that area is going to grow dramatically. It goes to the airport. And I just thank God the mayor has four appointments on the airport board, so they can directly look at what needs to be done in that. So it is very important when we have major developments come in the city. And that's the challenge that Corey and we have to face, is that you have, well, we have like 14, 15 TIFs?
Somewhere around there.
Yeah, it's around there. The fact is, is making sure we don't place a major economic piece in a TIF area that, that increment. And historically, when the TIF expires, public safety is the one who really gets that money from that TIF area outside of the taxes. And that's why I was, I was glad that they use that money for the public safety piece because that's traditionally what it's used for.
You know, I wanna set ourselves up where we count the fences around.
And Corey, I see what I can do to get, they supposedly, they emailed us the TIF information bit of report, so I can forward it to you when I get my hands on it, so you can have it.
Councilman, thank you for your clarification and explanation. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from commissioners? Okay, so it's time to retain the.
So first up, we have a TIF district resolution amendment for Midwest Center TIF resolution dated December 17, 2002.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Go call, please.
Had my handy Daniel call here, hold on. Sherman Wilson?
Yes.
Darren Washington?
Yes.
Alan Harrell?
Yes.
Willie Miller?
Yes.
Adam Hall?
Yes.
Jeremiah King?
Yes.
Tom Serra?
Yes.
Will show by a vote of seven to zero. The resolution for the Midwest Center TIF has been approved.
Okay. So do you continue?
Okay. Next, we have TIF district resolution amendment for Lakefront TIF, Resolution 2745, dated August 15, 2000.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second.
Sherman Wilson?
Yes.
Darren Washington?
Yes.
Alan Harrell?
Yes.
Willie Miller?
Yes.
Adam Hall?
Yes.
Jeremiah King?
Yes.
Tom Serra?
Yes.
It will show by a vote of seven to zero. The Lakefront TIF resolution has been approved.
And lastly, we have TIF district resolution amendment for urban renewal area Truck City, TIF resolution dated April 5, 1977, also known as the Smalls Farm Urban Renewal Area.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Go call.
Sherman Wilson?
Yes.
Darren Washington?
Yes.
Alan Harrell?
Yes.
Willie Miller?
Yes.
Adam Hall?
Yes.
Jeremiah King?
Yes.
Tom Serra?
Yes.
Show by a vote of seven to zero. The urban renewal area Truck City Resolution, TIF District Resolution has been approved.
We'll pass them around the sheet.
Almost done. We have to sign. Is it just three times?
You have to sign three times, each one of them.
Okay, I can start on that. Can we sign those outside the meeting?
Yes. Yeah, you can continue with the meeting. I just was letting you down passing them around.
Sure. Okay, the next item is the Planning Zoning Department update.
Well, I've covered a lot earlier in our presentation regarding the comprehensive, or the, oh my word, the new unified development ordinance. Today, you should have received in your packet the final adopted comprehensive plan. City council approved that after you approved it. And so we are very happy to have that up online. That is also on our website at gary.gov/Planning underneath the Projects tab. So that is your hard copy to have and share with your neighbors. The Board of Zoning Appeals last, this past month also had a very short presentation on the unified development ordinance. So we are trying to hit a couple different places to receive comments and feedback regarding the unified development ordinance. Sylvia's continuing to working on the mapping. The mapping is also leading us to a fully accomplished address management system. And so Sylvia, do you wanna provide a little bit of an update on that?
Sure. So currently, as you know, with our zoning ordinance, as Ms. Sharp stated, things have shifted, which means our map shifted as well. But in shifting that map to align with our comprehensive plan, which is what our zoning ordinance will do, we have notified some gaps and some discrepancies within our addressing, which will impact safety. My main concern with it is where's fire gonna go when there's fire? And it tells you your address is dashed here and they go to your backyard, but the fire is in the front yard. Or same thing, police go to find and the address is addressed wrong. So we have a lot of discrepancies as far as parcel combination, right? Because historically, the city's parcels are 25 by 125 and they are being combined. And when they're addressed, they're combining them and just putting a dash and using the first and the last number from each parcel, which is not appropriate. The address also is in wrong direction. It should be facing wherever your front door is, but a lot of them is on a side street. And we're having that issue right now, especially with the rezone, because you have corridors, but then you have residential addresses facing that corridor. And it will put that residential structure as a business, right? So we're taking that and adjusting them, dropping the hyphens, because even if we drop the hyphens and they do decide to subdivide, that address is available. But with the hyphen in there, it takes away that separation, right? So when we go to separate, now that first lot that stays what it is has to be 1472-26, wait, no, 20, yeah, that's even, 26. So then now you're trying to figure out, okay, what's next to it? What's going after that? So if we capture it and we just use one of the numbers, it leaves availability for them to resubdivide or for it to change in the future because we don't know what tomorrow will bring. Ultimately, we also found out that we don't manage and maintain a address system, which is why we have this issue because people are just making their own addresses, right? It's really just basically how it's gonna happen if you don't have a process. So now we have a full-fledged address management system. We also have a full-fledged, well, we will have a full-fledged GIS. Land use system will help everybody understand this code because you will be able to go online, hover and pull in different data sources, analyze, and it'll be accurate because it will follow strict X and Y coordinates based on the legal description. So once we complete all of that, I think we will be in a great space and it'll help fire and it'll help safety. It'll help me with the zoning and it'll help everybody ultimately.
Are you working with the county recorder for all that?
Yes, yes. They are.
Condolences.
Well, actually, they're very, they're a great partnership in this and we're, I'm probably getting on their nerves mostly because like today I just discovered another situation, so I'll be down there. But, you know, we're looking through archives. We're verifying combination. Like this is literally boots-on-the-ground type of endeavor. I have explored every part of the eastern portion of the city from Broadway all the way down to 53rd. Now I have to do the other side, right? And that's important because we don't know what's sitting there. We click on and we see and those areas aren't in real time. So a business that was once there now has a condo sitting on it, but it's own business, right? So then that person has a fire and it puts them in a bad situation because, hey, I do apologize, but that grandfather has, grandfather has passed away and you cannot rebuild your house there. Now it has to be a business. That impacts the tax base. Right now, we have structures that have large businesses and large condominiums sitting on them and they're being taxed as vacant plotted land. Right? So that's an issue with us as a city holistically. And capturing that in this walkthrough, it helps us, but it also helps me find other things like outdated GBLs and things of that nature.
So speaking of GBLs, that's the last update. The GBL stands for general business license. Every single business that operates in the city of Gary, whether you're in Gary or out of Gary, if you operate in Gary, you have to have a business license. So if you're a food vendor, mobile food truck from Chesterton, you wanna come and pop something up in the middle of the night, you need to have a business license.
Lemonade stand?
So Michael Gaines has been leading this effort to streamline our, our general business license process. We work very closely with the fire department, the health department, the building department, and environmental to make sure that all of our inspections are being done on an annual basis. Our renewal timeframe for general business licenses is January every single year. So every single year, all the businesses have to renew their licenses by the end of January. So we are working with the community to notify, our business community, notify them that their, their renewals are up because we have several expired business licenses that need to be paid. And so we'll be sending letters out. So if you run into anybody, they ask you a question about, I got this letter saying this renewal. Every business requires a license to operate in the city of Gary. And their timeframe to renew is from January 1st to January 31st. So we are preparing to have that, have that flood of inquiries. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, motion to adjourn?
I move and a second.
All right, thank you.
It was a lot of moving.
This is our copy to retain?
Yes, not the books.
Not the books.
Please leave the binders. Take your, take.